Good morning, it's the fourteenth of July and welcome to the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee, the sixth one for this year. In attendance here, we have all councils except for the Deputy Mayor and Deputy Mayor Jacob Madison provides his apologies and he's actually requested a leave of absence for today's meeting, so I'll move a leave of absence for him. Do I have a second to thank you councillor Ireland? I'll put that to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand and it's unanimous in the room, thank you very much. We're now moving on to the acknowledgement of country and councillor Kunsman, would you like, mind doing that?
We Ipswich City Council acknowledge and recognise the sovereign and human rights of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people and the communities of Ipswich to self-termination, meaningful engagement with local government and shared governance and decision-making. We commit through the Indigenous accord to the strengthening of bonds between council and the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities of Ipswich.
Thank you councillor Kunsman. We're now moving into any declarations of interest on the matters on the agenda, are there any declarations of interest? No, thank you very much, if anything happens during the meeting, please raise your hand. Business outstanding, item one is a response to a notice of motion on spray seal road maintenance treatments, I think councillor Ireland, was this your notice of motion?
No.
No, it was councillor Doyle's, my apologies. Would you like to ask council officers any questions on, yes, may I have the relevant council officers to the lectern please?
Good morning Graham Martin, manager Capital Delivery Branch.
Thank you.
Good morning and thank you Mr Martin for the fantastic report, it's certainly given me an extra level of detail as I continue on the journey to understanding our, the surfaces on our road network. Can I just get an understanding of if we were to seek out alternate treatments, how does that occur, you know, I'm thinking are there trade fairs, is there research undertaken by various companies to get a little bit more technical detail and to investigate alternative solutions, I guess, alternative products? Does that ongoing investigation occur in council?
So just to be clear, is that to look at alternatives to just asphalt or spray seal and is there third, fourth or fifth options?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there are, the short answer is yes, there are industry conferences that provide that sort of information, probably as a first point, then there's an Australian Flexible Pavements Association which are well represented for that, that'd probably be a good place to start and maybe invite a representative of that organisation to come out and give us a rundown on what are the options and I'm sure they'll have a list of twenty of different options and some will be suitable for us and some won't be, and then it'd be a matter of having a look at which ones, what's the risk profile attached to each of those, what are the ones we'd like to have a look at and a trial, and then just understanding what sort of a timeline do we want the trials to last, sometimes what happens is we look to put down a trial, but the trial's got to last five years before you determine whether it's a worthwhile surface, by that point we've lost track of the follow-up, is it working, what are we actually comparing it to? So as long as we put some parameters around what it is the trial is wanting to achieve in a timeline and what's the baseline we're recording against, then those options are there, but again, I think that Flexible Pavement Association should be able to give us independent advice on what's available and what's in Brisbane is the other thing, some of the treatments may be available across Australia, but it may mean you've got to bring in machinery from interstate and that may blow out costs for small trials.
Of course, yeah, okay, thank you, that, you know, when we think about getting back to basics and what our residents want and roads is a big thing and we regularly receive feedback and being compared to other LGAs and I would really like to get an accurate reading on what we do compared to our peers, other LGAs and yeah, explore opportunities and obviously, you know, this is all about budget and resources, but it would be helpful information if we went into budget discussions in future years and we were, you know, armed with the information where we could potentially make a decision to allocate additional funds to get a better outcome for the citywide for residents, so on that basis, can we arrange the workshop and perhaps a presentation by that industry body?
Yep, I'm getting nods from the CEO.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yeah, yeah, certainly there's no, I can go back to them and work out a bit of a timeline, see what they can come back with, some sort of a summary to begin with that we can distribute and then work out what we want to do, whether it's a workshop or further information from the industry and we can decide how we want to go forward then and have something, some options available before the next round of budget deliberations, which obviously will be, you know, this side of Christmas to start that sort of work.
Okay, so I should move to amend or not necessary, we just wait for that workshop to be arranged?
I think in the past I've just sort of sent an email to the CEO asking for a workshop and that usually happens.
Yeah, so on that basis, I'm happy to follow it up and get something happening for all of us.
Great idea.
Yeah, great, and so thank you again for the report.
Thank you, thank you councillor Feknun.
Thanks Mr Martin, I just want to understand, was this an Iowa opening exercise for the branch and were there any significant learnings that came out of this particular report in understanding, you know, these processes that we have in place? I understand lots of it, you know, is driven by budget, but there was some, you know, high intervention rates in particular financial years, was that a surprise, was that something that you expected?
It was higher than expected, but not a surprise if that's a bit of a sitting-on-the-fence answer, so yes, it was a bit of a surprise when the guys went through and we were able to, to the best they could, to collect the information that was coming through as complaints lodged directly back to the project team, because they're not coming through the Cess request, they're not coming through the normal, excuse me, the normal channels, they're being addressed as they should be, quickly and quietly on-site, when they started addressing those and we're getting fifty percent and sixty percent callback rates, then that was definitely a surprise that it was that high, the fact we're getting them was not a surprise because we hear about those regularly and it is a bit of a nature of the beast for the spray seal, but yes, higher than expected is definitely the answer I'd give.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Doyle, thank you very much for this, that was a really good notice of motion and a very good report, Mr Martin. May I ask, a note on page ten that discusses how council prioritises road maintenance projects, how do we accommodate the feedback from residents when they do ring our service centre or councillors and let us know about issues, how is that factored into the prioritisation or is it not?
It is factored in, but we'll go back and, you know, to be honest, we will make an engineering decision then based on the feedback that we've received, so we will go back and have a look at what is the nature of the failure that we're receiving, so it's not that the complaints are not looked at, but we will then revert back to very much an engineering decision and an asset management decision, what was the cause of the failure and is it, in sort of my terms, a catastrophic failure, that means we need to significantly change or rehabilitate the road, or is it more of a maintenance type issue where we need to go back and do some extra sweeping, do a localised patch, but it's about whether that's a surface treatment or a pavement treatment.
Right, okay, and Mr Martin, a note also on page ten, road condition assessments, the report states that every three to four years council has a full condition assessment undertaken of the entire sealed road network and the last one was during the period October nineteen to April twenty twenty, when is the next one due?
Well, I couldn't tell you exactly what date that's booked in, but it's rolling over and preempting it, and I'm probably going to top myself in for something we're not quite ready for, with the flood recovery works, then some of that work will be being undertaken currently over portions of the network and focused on the network, but I don't think we've got an exact date booked in for the full four-year review.
Okay, thank you, I think councillor Maligan, you had a question?
Thank you, good morning Mr Martin.
Morning.
Noting that the report does state that spray seals cost approximately forty percent of what asphalt does, but however, spray seal gives a life of seven to ten years versus fifteen to twenty for asphalt, so at the twenty-year mark, it's comparably about the same, so it would mostly come down to what is fit for purpose at the location, so that spray seal would be more relevant to rural areas for longer distance of rollout and ease of application as opposed to asphalt being more appropriate in urban areas.
Do you have a question for Mr Martin?
Yes, I do, thank you mayor, I'll be getting to it in my time, so with regards to the design, that moving forward, it would be considered which application to use and which location based on that assessment, knowing that Ipswich City Council does own asphalt plant at Riverview and that it is leased out, would there be some way, and here comes the question, of reducing the cost of asphalt material using a different procurement method considering that we purchase from the leasee of our own plant?
Now, slightly incorrect in your information there, we don't own the asphalt plant at Riverview, we own the land it sits on, Brisbane City Council own the asphalt plant and they run it and at this stage, the only asphalt we buy through that plant on a regular basis is for the Flowcon trucks and patching trucks and that's an X-bin supply contract only, the asphalt and the other bitumen works are out to a separate annual contract and they're from two local suppliers going competitive tension with those, so is there an alternative? I think, I do think with the competitive tension we have between the two local asphalt companies, we get good prices for, we have historically got good pricing for asphalt in the local market, but we don't own the plant at Riverview, we own the land and the land is leased to Brisbane City Council.
So just taking that further, would it be worth the exercise of an assessment as to whether, if we increased the volume of asphalt we were purchasing, would we gain a better bargaining price on that with procurement or is there some other method that could be investigated to deliver better pricing for the ratepayer?
When we, we've recently, twelve maybe eighteen months ago, when we redid the asphalt pricing and we got a second local contractor supplier involved, our prices dropped by somewhere in the region of twenty-five percent by getting those two in and that was in my mind probably below industry market rates at the time, so we got very competitive tender through the procurement process, with the current market and tensions that are out there, we are being asked for some, I think, realistic price increases from the two suppliers that are in line with market conditions, I still think we're getting good pricing in the market for the asphalt and spray seal combined, both companies do both treatments, so in total square metres, we wouldn't change, there's some advantages as we saw in the report from switching across to asphalt, there's some upfront cost disadvantages in moving straight across to asphalt and to use really bad analogies, if I'm at home, I don't always go to the full capital cost to repaint my house, I'll go through and do some temporary shorter-term fixes according to my budget and that's a reality, so that's a bad analogy, but that's sort of how we're looking at it at the moment, is that a perfect model, no it's not, but it's a starting point for us when we're looking at what needs to be done going forward.
Thank you, Mr Martin, on page twelve, there's a few tables there, so thank you very much, and I've seen the financial year nineteen twenty, the resale square meter was what, three hundred and eighty-four thousand?
Yep.
And it's reduced in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, but I also see the asphalt resurface increase from forty-three thousand to a hundred and seven thousand, is it because we're making a decision to do more asphalt and less spray seal or is that just a coincidence or?
That was just a balance of moving from doing some more arterial roads and some industrial roads.
Right.
And so they did more square metres, less spray seal, we're also currently doing some fairly extensive overlays on Queen Street, Smith Street and Keeges Road in around Goodenham Red Bank area, so they're long square metres, surface treatment, because they're major arterial roads, they're not a spray seal, they're an asphalt, so that's just one of those, year by year, you can't compare directly, but you should be able to watch trends, trends over time.
Okay, thank you Mr Martin, are there any other questions, Mr Martin? No, thank you very much, Mr Martin.
Thank you.
The recommendation before us that this report be provided as information only to councils from a notice of motion and that be noted and no recommendations at this time are being submitted, do I have a mover for that? Councillor Doyle, do I have a second, I think councillor Kunsman, any discussion on that? No, councillor Doyle?
Just to sum up, it's, you know, obviously a hot topic, it impacts our residents right across the city, so I'm really looking forward to arranging a workshop and further discussion so we can delve a bit deeper and look for potentially some efficiencies with better outcomes, or we may not, we may, you know, land in the spot that we're receiving maximum benefit, I will circulate something to everybody shortly.
Thank you councillor Doyle, if there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand and it's unanimous in the room and carried. Moving on to item two, which is the confirmation of the minutes from the sixteenth of June, I will move those, do I have a second for those? Thank you councillor Maligan, any discussion on those minutes? No, in that case I move that the minutes of the meeting of the sixteenth of June be confirmed, those in favour please raise your hand, it's unanimous and carried. We move on to item three, which is the disposal of council freehold land in trust located at seven thousand and one Red Bank Plains Road, Red Bank Plains, does anyone have a, actually, may I ask the relevant council officer a question on this?
Good morning Mary councillors, Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles, on page thirty-three, it obviously talks about the comparison of the plans and reality, I guess my question is, does this happen very often, that there's this kind of realignment?
Not really, things normally happen in a different process where we have a large parcel of land, the developer will own all the land and they will dedicate the roads as they're designed at the time that they lodge a plan signing, this went a little bit backwards, where we had a little area on the survey plan held in trust where we thought the roads would go before we had the design, when we've received the design, the road to the north was about right, there's no changes there, the road to the south was a bit on a dogleg, I suppose, and this straightens it out by taking some land that we own in the trust, providing that to the developer and receiving a bit more in return as road reserve, so it's essentially a land swap, but it is an unusual scenario, I haven't done one of these before.
Thank you, any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you councillor Ireland.
Mr Bowles, I'm just not sure from the diagram, does the road go straight through to Coldham Street, does it go across and join up?
The road reserve is there, available for council to construct that road in future, but the developer hasn't been required to do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good question councillor Ireland, any other questions? No, thank you very much, Mr Bowles. I move that recommendations A, B and C be moved together, do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle, any discussion on this matter? No, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand, thank you, it's unanimous and carried. We now move on to item four, which is the council response to the state government Independent Environmental Protection Agency consultation, may I ask for the relevant council officer to the lectern please?
Good morning councillors, Brett Davy, manager city design.
Thank you very much, Mr Davy, thank you very much for this report and the considered opinion, do you mind if I take you to the draft survey response and if you'll indulge me, I'd like to discuss a few of them, because obviously this is a bit of a heated topic, or I said heated, but a topic that's of great interest in our community as well, especially with council and communities, interactions with DES.
Of course.
And I guess I'm looking at question four, which is, how much do you agree that an independent organisational form would improve community confidence in the integrity of the environmental regulator? And we've got, you suggested disagree, do you mind outlining the reasons for that in the opinion?
Yeah, of course, so my thinking on that question was, if you focus on the current circumstances and level of community confidence, does simply moving toward saying that a new organisation's created and it's independent, does that change confidence in the community? I don't feel that it does, I think confidence is similar to trust in that you need to build trust over time through actions and simply naming or a structural change will not do that.
Okay, thank you, and question six was, how much do you agree establishing a board to oversee an independent EPA would improve accountability and obviously you're suggesting that council's responses be strongly disagreed, do you mind unpacking that?
Yeah, so there were three options in the discussion paper. Option one was essentially rebrand the existing structure and rename it within government. The second option was to have an independent EPA that wasn't board governed. And the third was to have board governed. The, I could not see a particular difference in accountability between having a independent EPA that was governed by government in a government structure versus a board structure.
Thank you, Mr Davy. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, ma'am. Can I just ask, I'm aware that in other states within Australia, there are EPAs and have had, you know, a good degree of success. Would you agree with my, my understanding? And if so, are there some key differences in why that model is effective as opposed to what's being suggested here in Queensland?
Yep. Thank you, councillor. I think there are successes within domestically and overseas of EPA and an EPA as a concept has its own brand identity. And my understanding is that the model in other states is successful. When looking at this particular issue, I consider the balance of, well, we've got an existing structure and existing function within government. We've got reported issues with that and challenges. And so is the solution transitioning to a different entity? Or is the solution to use the resources that you would spend on doing that transition to actually improve the current entity? So that was the tone that I tried to focus on with this. Wasn't a suggestion at all that an EPA by name, brand and function wouldn't be effective. I just feel that it might be more efficient to invest those resources in the spaces that need that investment within the current structure. And I don't know explicitly what those are, but I think that would be worth considering.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fekner.
Certainly a hot take, and I understand councillor Milligan and I were at the LGAQ's Waste Forum recently and lots of people in the industry have similar views to you, Mr Davy. My question is, should we consult with our environment sustainability team when putting this submission together? And are they in agreement with what's been put forward this morning?
Yes, I've coordinated a very brief workshop to garner views. To be honest with you, the initial view from our internal environment sustainability team was an EPA is a good idea. Once we talk through the balance of issues, I think we ended up in alignment.
Thank you, Brett.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr Davy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll move that the report be received, noted and made available to the Queensland state government as this was city council's submission, together with the survey response as did on attachment one. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. I'll open up for discussion. councillor Fekner?
It might seem at odds with the community that, you know, this is the recommendation that we're putting forward. However, as Mr Davy has, you know, unpacked with us this morning and as you can see in the submission that we will give to the state government, this is a very pragmatic approach. It's like, it's almost like government giving government advice on, you know, you know, how to make a bureaucracy efficiency and where to best spend and allocate those resources. I'm absolutely in agreement with Mr Davy that, you know, a focus on, you know, upskilling and resourcing the Department of Environment and Science could yield better results sooner for us. And I think, yeah, it's a pragmatic response and it's well considered, but it's one that we're going to have to bring our residents on the journey with those, you know, who have inquiries to us as to, you know, why we're not supportive of an EPA. And in principle, I guess we are, we're in support of all of the things that an EPA represents. But how quickly can we get to that utopia? How many years, you know, have other states struggled to give the powers to their EPA so that they can function correctly? So much legislative unpicking needs to happen to ensure that an EPA has the right powers, you know. And I think that, you know, on balance, this, you know, submission is good advice to the state government as to where we think those resources would be better allocated. And in a really great position, Mr Davy has spent a lot of time recently understanding the processes within the state government, particularly the compliance arm of the Department of Environment and Science. So we are extremely well placed to, you know, be an outsider looking in to say, you know, how would we improve? So I think this is an excellent opportunity and a great submission.
Thank you, councillor Fekner. And as part of discussion, my initial response was that we need to set up an EPA, we need to do it better. And I found this report very informative and, as you know, had a bit of discussion with councillors. And I think the three paragraphs in particular on pages fifty-four and fifty-five on the summary position as well as all the other documentation. And the proposal from the LGAQ, I think, is, I would agree, is a far better, more pragmatic approach and will yield quicker results, but I think better results culturally in DES as well. So, yeah, I'll be obviously voting to support this too. It was a good report. councillor Quinsman?
Yes, I appreciate the pragmatic response, but also reiterate the need to take the residents on this journey with us. But I look particularly at question nineteen and if our position is that we don't feel we need an independent regulator, but we need the current organisation to sharpen their processes, shall I say, question nineteen might be useful, which is about establishing environmental, sorry, advisory committees for specific areas. I think that would be very useful.
Yep, good observation. Any other discussion? I'll put the recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. We move on to item five, which is the FOGO waste bin fee for tenanted properties. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions on this? No? In that case, I move that the FOGO waste bin charged for tenants of rental properties be set at eighty dollars per annum, effective from the first of July twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Johnick. Any discussion? I think it's a common sense one to align it with, it doesn't matter who owns the property, it's alignment. So if there's another discussion, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to item six, which is the Infrastructure and Environment Department Capital Delivery Report for May twenty twenty-two. Does anyone have any questions with the relevant council officer on this? No? In that case, I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. Any discussion? My method is to, again, draw our residents to the attachment one, which is a really good monthly summary, including pictures of, you know, people's rate payers money hard at work. Some great projects there. And I encourage you, and thank you very much, Infrastructure and Environment Department for providing a bit more detail for our residents as well. I think councillor Island has a question or a comment.
No, just a comment, please. I went for a drive on the weekend in Waters Road, it's looking pretty good. They've been grading it and doing diversion drains at the side. So thank you very much to everybody. I know it's a long road and it, but it's very well used and the residents out there appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Island. If there's no other discussion, I'll move the recommendation, oh, sorry, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Item seven is the exercise of delegation report. Would anyone like to ask the relevant council officer any questions? No? In that case, I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any discussion on that report? Put the recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Onto final report, item eight, which is the Planning and Environment Court Action Status Report. May I have the relevant council officer to the lectern, please?
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Anthony Bowles, acting development planning manager.
Thank you, Mr Bowles. I think you know what question I'm going to ask. The three applications before the Planning and Environment Court that the matter concluded August last year, have we had an update on that?
Unfortunately, no. The, I suppose the closest I've heard is that I'm aware that the judge is preparing their judgment and have made some comments that it is one of the biggest judgements that they'll ever be writing and that attributes a lot of time. And unfortunately, that's the closest I've got. It's just a whisper that they're working on it, I'm afraid. It will continue to be something we'll have to wait for, I'm afraid.
Are we, do we have any indication how long it'll take? A month?
Not at this stage, I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr Bowles? Thank you, Mr Bowles.
Thank you.
I move that the report be received and the contents noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Any discussion? No? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you, it's unanimous and carried. I don't have any notices of motion? No, no matters arising, procedural motions of four matters? No, in that case, I will close the meeting at nine thirty-two and the next one's obviously in ten minutes' time. Thank you very much.